And everyone, would everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance led by the Honorable Councilwoman Carrie Buzinski?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, yes. All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the 256th special meeting of the Livonia City Council. I am going to just, actually, I'm going to go to the clerk. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
Councilmember Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Vice President Tashnik?
Here.
President McCullough?
Here. And we show all six members of council present. This is the special meeting to talk in more detail. It's a voting meeting for the appointment of the former, well, now the Judge Jolly's council seat. So just to let everybody know, I know, I don't know if everybody's here for that, at 8:00 PM we will start our study meeting, and that's going to be more normal business. And but for right now, we're going to kind of go around everything, and this is specifically on the council appointment at 7:00 right now. So I am going to go right to the audience. So this is for items that are pertaining to the council appointment. If you'd like to make your way to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak if you would like to. If not, you don't have to. But I would like to open it up before we kind of get into the nuts and bolts. Seeing none, I'm going to move on from that. And so obviously, we've had multiple meetings. We had a really good committee of a whole meeting, and we had 25 people looking to fill the vacancy. It was a great night. We heard a lot of good things, and it's a lot of excitement for the city. So I'm going to kind of open it with kind of opening up to my council colleagues. This is a voting meeting. So basically, the flow of this meeting is motions can be made. The first to four with a vote is going to be the appointment. So that's going to be kind of how it's handled. There's really no playbook for this. It's kind of a unique situation, so we're just going to, so bear with us if I have to get our city attorney, Carter Fisher, for some approvals or denials. We'll start it from there. With that being said, I just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody in this process. I know it's been long. It seems like, you know, November was many moons ago with the holidays and everything. But this is a very important position for the city, and we appreciate all the feedback and turnout that we had, the correspondence from everybody. I'm sure I could speak for my colleagues. It was exciting. And obviously, going into the new year, we have an election with four open seats. So thank you again to everybody that took the time to come out. I know you only get three minutes, but the correspondence, everything, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you. It shows a lot on the civic duty of the city and people wanting to step up. So I'm going to open up the council for comments, motions, whatever you would like to do. Counsel?
Mr. McCullough.
Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kind of a little bit to reiterate what Mr. McCullough was just saying, I wanted to thank everyone as well who applied for the vacant council position. I reached out to each and every one of you. I've had many conversations, phone conversations, met for coffee, email conversations, and it was, I'm really excited about the future of Livonia because we have so many engaged and involved residents and people who want to be involved in our city because it is such a great community. I hope to see many of you on the ballot this November when the residents of Livonia, as you just said, get to elect four new council members. But today, for this position, the six of us elected by you to represent you have to make this decision, and it's tough. This is a tough decision, and I want to assure you that I am not taking this responsibility lightly today. I've truly thought about the ramifications that are going to come with my vote, and I'm sure my council colleagues have as well. This appointment is unique. We've lost a very experienced council member in Judge Jolly, and to try to replace him is impossible. So we have to, you know, use our best judgment here, and we have a huge list of complex decisions to make in 2025 that are going to impact Livonia for many years to come. So this is a very important meeting and a very important vote, and like I said, it's very serious. I know that those of you who applied and don't receive this appointment, because like I said, we had nearly 30 people apply, so we're probably going to have 29 people that are disappointed. But please continue to be involved. Don't let this be the end of this journey. If you do intend to run in November, I really want to encourage you to reach out to me. I'd be more than happy to chat with you about that process, help you as I can, add any advice. So just keep your head up, and thank you to all of you from the bottom of my heart. It is difficult to put yourself out there and do this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And I think with, we can go around the roundabout, but I think we do need a parliamentarian to say, with motions and support, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, Mr. President, we will need a motion since we've opened up an agenda item.
Yes. Are there any motion makers? Councilman Morgan?
Yeah. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for everybody who's applying.
You need to make a motion first.
You got to make a motion first.
Do I? Okay.
And then I think after we can...
Commentary after a motion.
After that, we'll do it at council announcements. Thank you.
Okay. My motion is to put in place for the remainder of this council election would be Linda Schele.
Support. The floor is yours, Mr. Morgan.
Okay. So I know there's a lot of people that applied. I read every single resume. I didn't reply to every resume, but I did have some correspondence. This is a very difficult decision, but in my mind, I think that we need to have somebody that's familiar with the city, that can step in and has very little training time. And Linda Schele is going to be the person that I would support because she's been here, she's done this, and she knows how to do this job. Until the rest of the people who've, who decide to run can put their name on the ballot and then see where, let the people vote them. It needs to be someone, I believe, that is trusted and knows what they're, what they're doing. So that's, that's my stance on this, and people that are coming off the street, that's great. I love it. I love the support from the people of Livonia. But those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Morgan. So right now, we do have a motion to appointment of Linda Schele. We have support from Councilman Donavick. I'm going to hand the floor over to him.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. First, I'd like to thank our president. We follow Robert's rules, parliamentarian rules, so there's process and procedures. So it's never chairing a meeting, and we work well as a council with our city attorney trying to follow proper procedures. I'd like to thank Sarah. She's our council office manager. Throughout this process, if you've been following city council business, our council office manager handles and kind of organizes all the daily business of a council. And this process has been so unique, and you'll hear some council members talking about this tonight. It's unique, but it's also been something that's been going on for decades. This is not the first time the city council has appointed. It's not going to be the last. I think in the last 20 years, city council has appointed maybe five or six various people. Our current mayor was appointed as a city council member. We have some council members in the audience tonight that were appointed. So while it may be unique to us right now, it has been something that's been going on for a very long time, and Sarah helps us do that, and our administrative staff helps us do that. Regardless of my colleagues' decision this evening, I do appreciate all the countless hours that my colleagues have spent on this one. I know I personally have spent over 30 hours on this one item, and that's a lot. I mean, I've been on council since 2019, and you spend a lot of time deliberating over specific issues and talking to your colleagues, talking to residents, talking to different decision-makers, and seeking out advice and sort of speak. But spending this much time on a particular item just goes to show I know how deliberate I've been on this issue and how deliberate my council members have been on this decision as well. Each of us invested a lot of time, and as we should. I mean, we're choosing a person, and on council, you typically are voting on actionable things, contracts, developments. Many of you are here this evening for a development that could be taking place in our community. So we vote on things, and now you're voting on a person. It's not easy. Ultimately, the city council has full authority to appoint. We have the full authority to appoint who the city council, majority of the city council wants to appoint, not the mayor, not a third party, not a vote of the residents. It's our sole duty by charter, our constitution, that the city council has to fill and do our job. So I know, me personally, I've spoken to at least 30 people, I want to say, that have been interested in the role. Some have decided no longer to be interested, some are very interested, and it's been fun because I've met people I never would have met otherwise that I think would be phenomenal candidates to be on city council. Now, whether they can get appointed or not is a decision, again, amongst a majority of council. That is the process. The city council votes as a majority whoever they want to appoint. But if you want to run for office, you can run for office like we all did, and I think so many great people in our city have the potential to run for office and people that I will support. I've spoken to people that I would never vote for, for city council, but it's been fun to engage in that conversation. That's my job, and I've enjoyed it, having those conversations, talking to people. So I know I've spent a lot of time, and I think this has been the most, I'm super proud of this process, because it's been the most, and no offense to any of my past councils, but it has been the best process because we have been so accessible to the community. Again, I've spent over 30 hours myself. I know countless of my colleagues have spent countless hours talking to just about anybody that is interested. So to suggest anything other than that is laughable. This council has been so diligent in talking to everybody they possibly can and having really good conversations with people and teaching people about council and going through the process and learning. I mean, just like any job, you have conversations with people and you have conversations with your coworkers, and I've loved it, and I've got to talk to a lot of great people, and one of which I will be supporting is Linda Schele. Linda was elected to the Livoni School Board in 2003. She served on the school board until 2011. She was a planning commissioner from 2008 until 2013. She was appointed to the Livoni Brownfield Redevelopment Authority in 2008. She was elected to the Livoni City Council in 2013 until 15, when she ran for Livoni Treasurer, and she won. She was our treasurer until 2023. Most recently, she was appointed to the Livoni Zoning Board of Appeals, the ZBA, in 2023. She's lived in her parents' house in Livoni since the 1960s. Her children are graduates of Livoni Public Schools. Unfortunately, they're graduates of Stevenson. Go Chargers! But I'm not going to hold that against her. She's not a Bentley Bulldog, though, some may be. She has a personal background as a mortgage banking industry for 25 years. She's a justifiable candidate for this appointment, having an abundant amount of experience in municipal government, talking to people. I've had a lot of great conversations with her, like others, and ultimately, she convinced me. So I'll be voting for her. That's not a knock on any one individual candidate that has sought out this position. I hope every single one of you file for office. I know our clerk will be very busy this year with the elections, so I hope whether she gets it or anybody gets it. I mean, again, it's a majority of the council. I'm looking forward to serving with any of you, and, but I will be supportive of Linda. And again, thanks to my colleagues. I think this has been the most transparent, honest, and integral process, and I think it's a hallmark of local government, and I'm proud of it and thankful to my colleagues for this process and the learning and, learning and meeting so many people. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. Anybody else from council? Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yes. Do you want to defer?
No, please, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, so to concur with my colleagues, this has been, you know, a very time incentive, time-intensive process for us here on council, something that we take incredibly seriously. Although this decision is made on multiple occasions, it is still rather unique. It's not something that you necessarily have a plan for. So as with all things, I try to be really transparent and accessible to people when it comes to how I see council. If you didn't know, I summarize all city council meetings, committee meetings as well. This meeting is streamed and recorded, but that's unusual. Most of our committee meetings aren't, and I provide commentary-free summaries so that people can have information about what's happening in our community very easily. I also host monthly coffee hours so that I can take questions. My November coffee hour, which was in person, I took many questions about this appointment and what this process looks like. In January, on the 18th, I'll be hosting another coffee hour about council and what our role is and how to apply to run for council, because we have talked to so many people who are interested in, you know, being on this dais and running for city council in this coming year. And I think that's really exciting. I want to see people engage in the process and run for council, and I do my best to be accessible, to answer questions honestly, you know, to a fault sometimes, because, you know, I'll be honest and say when things are hard or challenging, and they are, you know, especially when you have a full-time job, which, you know, a lot of people don't know that this is a part-time job, that we all have full-time work, that we have families, and this is a labor of love, and it's something that I take incredibly, incredibly seriously. For this vacancy in particular, we're looking to fill in for a remainder of a term for Jim Jolly, who truly has been a mentor for me in this role, and I appreciate and value his experience in council outside of Councilwoman Toy. He's the longest-serving member of this current council with nine years of experience. Otherwise, everyone here is relatively new in the scheme of things, having been first-term service persons, elected officials, with five years or less of experience. You know, we are a pretty fresh face council. I'm finished, you know, I'm just starting my second year, and I learn a lot every single day. And so I think having experience is important. I think it's valuable. I think it's important to residents that they have people on this dais who understand the history of Livonia, that they understand the issues that come before council. We are looking to fill a position of somebody who had a lot of experience and knowledge, and we've lost that. And to provide a fill-in for the remainder of the term with somebody who can carry that on, I think is really important. I personally, in evaluating how I would decide how to vote on this, I use my own personal experience in running for office. I ran for office twice. I ran in 2021, and I lost, and I ran in 2023, and I won. And let me tell you, they were, they were really important learning experiences. And for me, as an individual, they taught me a lot about myself, and I also know that having gone through that process, as hard as it was, that it's made me a better public servant and council member, and I think that's important. You know, one of the things you do when you're running for office is you're really being vetted by the community for a six-to-nine-month period, and that vetting is really important, especially when you come out with a majority of votes to, you know, get a seat. You know, we had six people run in that last election. All of those are great people. Across, across the city of Livonia, you will hear great things about all six of us who ran, but only four people get to have the job. So sometimes when you, you don't win, it doesn't mean that something's wrong with you. It just means that it didn't work out that time, and that was the lesson I learned the first time I've been through the process. And I'm feeling like Rob and talking a lot, so my apologies, but I do want to be just really clear because this is very important to me and say that the lessons that I learned and the process that I went through when I ran for office, I feel like that was important for residents to have made that choice of when it was the right time for me to serve our community. And I feel like as a person, as a candidate, I was better prepared. I knew myself better because I went through an election process, and I think that is important for other people to go through when they, you know, have this job. And that is just my personal opinion and my personal feelings, but it means that when I look at voting in support of somebody for this role, I think experience is important, and I think having run and won for office is equally as important. Of the 30 people or so who applied, only four people met those qualifications of having run and won for office. Linda Schele's name's before us now, and I think she's a great candidate for office. You know, as was previously noted, she was our treasurer for two terms. Budgets is one of the largest things that we deal with here on council. She understands the city finances and its budget. She currently serves on the Zoning Board of Appeals in Brownsfield Development Authority. And, you know, one is a council-appointed position and one is an administration-appointed position, and I think that's important because it demonstrates that she has working relationships with people who are in this building, and we have to have working relationships here in order to get things done, you know, and be productive representatives for residents here in Livonia, and, you know, that, that matters. And from my own personal experience in working with Linda, I also appreciate her attention to detail. We have a lot of really exciting, really big, really important projects coming before us in council this year, and I think that her attention to detail, you know, she, she looks things over with a fine-tooth comb in my experience, and I want somebody who's going to see things that maybe one of us missed, so that when we're making really big decisions for our city and as we move forward with those really big decisions, we know that every i has been dotted and every t has been crossed, and those are the reasons why I, in my heart, believe that Linda Schele would be a great stand-in for Jim Jolly's vacancy and a wonderful representative for the city of Livonia for the remainder of this one-year term.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buzinski. Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I promise I won't give you my political history because we would all have to go to sleep. So I just want to say that I'm sorry I couldn't be here on the 16th. I've been struggling with this cold COVID and everything else that hit me for the last two months. So I appreciate and heard about many of you that came forward with your time, your energy, and the urging probably of yourself and your families and friends to help this community even greater, become even greater than what it is. We have 40 days to decide this. The clock is ticking, so we're here tonight and need to make that determination. This is my last year on council, actually, yeah, my whole, this is, 25 is my last year as it is a couple of, in fact, I sit between the other two that are leaving as well, Scott and, Scott and Rob, who have also done a terrific job on the council. We are extremely proud of all of you that have come out and many of you that want to serve regardless of your background, your experience, or whatever, you're Livonians, and that's important. That's important to this community to have interaction. So I encourage you, like some of my other colleagues, to please come out and formulate an election. It's expensive to do, but an appointment's much easier, as we all know. I've been through a lot of different appointments. Schoolcraft College, we had a lot of appointments because those were six-year terms, and a lot of people can't devote that kind of time or life changes within those six years. And also here on the council, we've had many, as has been alluded to earlier. So we need people. I think that's why term limits passed, not that I'm so jumping up and down about term limits, but because we wanted fresh faces, we wanted faces that would bring to light some new kinds of things, and we've gotten that with Carrie and Rob and Martha as well and Scott that have come into the council and just, you know, came off running and studied and did things terrifically. So whatever, whatever happens tonight happens, but I think we should keep an open mind regardless of what we do, and I appreciate all those that did apply. I'm sorry I couldn't hear all of you, but I heard some very good things about many of you. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else from council? So we do have a motion on the table. I'm going to go to the audience on this specific item. If someone would like to speak, you could come up in, I think we get three minutes?
Three, two. Two, two?
Is it two or three?
I thought it was two.
Oh, it's two minutes.
Two minutes.
Two for regular, yeah. So two minutes on this specific motion. Name and address?
Peter Dale, 9812 Cranston Street. Two things I have to say. One is you guys have a very inflated opinion of yourselves. Secondly, this is just a done deal. I mean, two months ago, we knew this was going to happen, and most of the people out here are not in favor of Linda Schele for whatever reason. And you guys have had, it was in the bag. I mean, two months ago, that's why people were coming out in droves. So I'm just letting you know, this won't be forgotten.
Thank you. Good evening. Name and address?
Kate Sheskovsky, 16941 Shrewsbury. Seems, seems to me that you're picking the same old people time and time again. There's not enough variety on, on the council. I would prefer to have one of, one of the 30 people that, that came, came to the last meeting and spoke. I think there's too much of a regular turnover with, you know, with regular, the people that run. There's too often the, the same people, and I feel that Linda Schele is one of those people. And I think, think the council ought to be looking for some, some fresh blood. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to be, you know, rather than, than elect the same people over and over again, why not look for some, some, some different people, some people that have, have different ideas? And that's not to say that, I know there's, there's a learning curve, but I think based on the interview process, you can, you can determine which, which people are ready for, ready for, ready for this challenge. So I would encourage council to, to not vote for Linda Schele.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Margaret Durrell, 31545 Pembroke Street in Livonia. And I was looking at some of the bibliographies or histories that people have submitted, and I was really blown away with how much experience we have in our community that could really apply and be a helping hand. I know that there's only one opening available, and there are a lot of people who aren't going to be chosen, but I would encourage all of the people who have written letters of interest to keep on attending the meetings every time so that they can get some of the experience from being in the audience and get recognition in the future. And whoever gets it tonight, I wish them well.
Thank you. Any other audience communication? Hello?
Hi. Good evening. Deb Christensen. I had to work till 7:00, so I came a little late. Can you please just tell me what the motion is that's on the floor right now?
I could tell you the current motion right now is the appointment of Linda Schele.
Okay. Then I do have something to say.
The floor is yours.
So clock me.
You've got two minutes, and we'll start it.
You know what? We're going to restart just for you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Rob.
You've got two minutes.
Let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready. Do you, do all, do all of you, are you familiar with the letter that was written in Friday musings? If you haven't read it? I'm not going to pull it up and read it for you, but a concerned citizen said something very similar to what you've just been hearing at the podium tonight, and that is a vote against Linda. Sorry, Linda.
You got to point it towards me.
Okay. My apologies. So I've been in Livonia. I am approaching a very big birthday this next year. I'm not going to tell you which one. And Linda's name has been around for forever. It is time for new people, okay? So here's my concerns about this. Number one, that she's been around for forever. Number two is that we need some new blood, and we need to shake things up here in Livonia to like make better, make better, make Livonia better, make Livonia more progressive, and the fact that we want, we want younger families to come here. Well, we need to invite them here with a city council that is young and vibrant, okay? The, the, the second, the second reason, the second reason is that if you have Linda here, is she going to run again in November? Will she have a home court advantage, kind of like our Lions did last night? Will she? Do we have, do we have her on record as not wanting to run again in November? Or will she, will she have an advantage over all the other people that you've heard? So that's another reason. And do I have anything else to say? I don't think so. Thank you. I, I, I guess I do. I would encourage you to look for another candidate. You have oodles to choose from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't believe you didn't say, "Go Lions."
Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to close audience communication, and I'm going to ask Madam Clerk to please take the vote on the appointment of Linda Schele.
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
No.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
President McCullough?
No. And the motion carries four to two. With that, I am going to go back to the council for any closing remarks, and I'm going to go to the audience for anything that wasn't on this agenda, and you could have some public speaking. Councilman Donavick?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President, and I'd be remiss if we didn't mention "Go Lions," how silly of us to say "Not Go Lions" tonight. That was pretty awesome. Do you want to thank again the, the different people I was able to speak to, many of which I've never met before? I, I think there's a lot of phenomenal people that want to run for city council. At the committee meeting, like some I've talked about tonight, there was 25-some-odd some odd people that spoke at that meeting, and, uh, you really got to learn some interesting personalities, and I'm looking forward to the election, and I'm looking forward to, uh, continuing to serve with, with great people. We all have diverse opinions. I think we do have a pretty young council. We have a lot of new people in this council, like, uh, Councilwoman Buzinski alluded to earlier. You know, a lot of these faces out here are very new and very fresh. I was elected in two thousand nineteen, along with their president, uh, Mr. Morgan in twenty twenty-two, I believe, uh, Martha and Carrie in twenty-three, Laura yesterday. Um, so, I mean, we do have a very, uh, interesting council, and it's the most interesting job I've had, uh, because it's, it's a different job, and there's, there's not necessarily a, a blueprint, um, behind, behind working in local government, and you talk to so many people. Um, some of us may have a s, overinflated personality of ourselves, I think was mentioned earlier, uh, but I have a lot of fun with it. I get to meet a lot of great people, um, people that I will absolutely look forward to supporting as our future, future council members this year. Um, I will be off council by the end of this year. I think a few others of us will as well, but, uh, I think our city's in really great hands with, uh, these future council members and, and people that have stepped up to the plate and, and want to serve. So, uh, thanks to everyone I've got to meet so far. I'm looking forward to continue those conversations with you, and, uh, yeah, that's about it. Thanks, Mr. President.
I'm going to go to the Vice President, and I'll go to Councilwoman Toye.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I do agree with a lot of the comments made that we need some new people on council, and I, and I, and I'm looking forward to that coming in November of twenty-five, um, as the president and Mrs. Buzinski and I will be the only ones left come November with everyone else being term limited. Knowing that we're going to have four new members is exciting, and, and I do, once again, encourage the new people to reach out and, and get with us. Um, I just wanted to make kind of a comment. As far as, uh, Mrs. Shield, the name ID will not be an advantage for her. She already has it. So, whether she was on council or not, I don't think that, for me, that wasn't a deciding factor. That could have been a deciding factor, perhaps for someone new, and that would maybe have been an unfair advantage. I didn't take that into consideration, but the fact that it was brought up, I just wanted to address that. Um, but yes, new people, we are excited to have you. Um, it is quite a learning curve. Uh, I think I've mentioned it before, Mrs. Buzinski and I always joke that it's a baptism by fire, and we've kind of traveled through that fire together. Um, but, uh, welcome, and please reach out to us. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to Councilwoman Toye, then Councilwoman Buzinski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Um, we live in a democracy, and each of you are, uh, able to speak your minds, and, uh, when I was in the legislature, we never used names, so I kind of cringed when people were using names, but that's okay. Uh, I'm not used to that, but, um, I want to, because now that we have voted and the majority of the council has voted, we need to congratulate the new council member, Linda Shield. So, Linda, congratulations, and we welcome you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Buzinski?
Yes, I just wanted to, again, uh, can, uh, agree with my colleagues, uh, that new young people are exciting and honestly who I, uh, expect that I'll be, I want to help in the year ahead for the four open seats and whoever wants to run for them, um, in any way that I can. So, again, I do have a coffee hour scheduled for Saturday, January eighteenth, at the Civic Center Library at eleven AM. As always, these, uh, meetings are open to the public. I provide an overview of what's happened at city council, um, in the past month between my meetings, and have a topic. My topic, again, will be city council, how to file with the city clerk, how to file with Wayne County for campaign finance, timelines for running for office, and just general things to know, um, so that you can start off a campaign successfully. Um, people can reach out to me anytime. My cell phone number is on the city website. Um, I'm on social media, and you can email us. We are all incredibly accessible and share a lot of our time with residents who want to talk about ideas, questions, or concerns. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Buzinski. Um, anybody else? I'm going to just finish it off, and I'll open it up to audience communication. Um, I, again, I appreciate everybody for coming out, and I know that there's been a lot of, uh, a lot of things, a lot of rumors, a lot of different things going out, out there. Um, when I made a post that said, hey, we're looking for a council colleague, um, I never in a million years thought we would get the response that we did. Um, was it the greatest move in the world? It could have been probably done better. Um, but this is, you know, going back to my path to politics, it was very, it wasn't normal, you know? I, I'm just your typical guy that was a hockey coach, worked municipal government, um, had a couple of friends that pushed me forward to get into the game, and I met some great people along the way. It's been one of the greatest journeys, stressful, very, at times, but meeting each and every one of you has been something wonderful. And that meeting we had with twenty-five people speaking, and even the people in the audience, use this as locker room material. Use this. We've got four openings, and to see the response, it's big time. I mean, the, the selection is going to be very pivotal for the long-term of the city. So, while this might not work out at this for the appointment, reach out to me. You know, if you guys need any questions answered about campaign finances, as some of the colleagues said, you know, reach out, because it is a journey that no one can prepare you for. Um, I, I always use the analogy, it's like, once, once, once you file and you get involved, you, it, it's all downhill in a weird way, but it's one of the most rewarding ways. And so, again, when I seen the response that we did have and some of the great candidates, I mean, some of these resumes, I'm looking at going, man, you know, look, they put me to shame, and, uh, I still remember, and I think, uh, one of the candidates reached out and said, I don't have any qualifications for this. And I said, I didn't really either when I jumped in. Listen, there's no playbook for this. You want to come out for your community? You want to make a difference? That's about the prereq that you need, in my opinion. You know, you learn along the way, at least that's how I do. I've learned by falling flat on my face, and you learn and you get back up, and you try not to make the same repeated mistakes. But I can tell you that everybody that's in this room, this might sting a little bit, but don't give up, I promise you. If there's someone that had a really weird journey to getting in this seat, it's me, and feel free to reach out, and, uh, you want to go have coffee, uh, feel free to reach out anytime. Um, this is going to ramp up, and obviously the filing deadline's sometime in April, so you've got some time. Uh, with that being said, I'm going to go back to the audience, uh, just for any final, uh, remarks. We're going to have three minutes, and then I'd like to let everybody know, we will have a study meeting that will start at eight PM. That's going to be our general meeting. The reason we didn't have the regular is because, obviously, the new year, so we start with a study. Uh, with that being said, if you would like to speak, feel free to make your way to the podium, uh, name and address for the record, and the floor is yours.
Greg Rocco, three six one one six Fairway Drive, Livonia. Uh, I live in Gulf Ridge Villa. I'm CPA, and I have a significant finance background. Uh, we're here again this evening to talk about the Sheets petition. I emailed the council last Friday regarding two things: a delay in the scheduled vote of January fifteenth, and to have a committee of the whole meeting to table and discuss the topic that, in, in detail that it deserves, because it's, the stakes are very high, particularly for the residents in that part of the city. I haven't received a response other than the canned responses, so we came tonight. In December, the Detroit Route, the Detroit News ran a story about Sheets in the city of Madison Heights, and I quote, "The Madison Heights City Council voted against approving a Sheets gas station on Dequender Road. Officials cited concerns that it was incompatible with adjacent residential land uses, would have adverse effects on the environment, and that Shields failed to demonstrate the need for its business in the area." Think about what you just heard: incompatible with adjacent areas, big concerns over the environment, and fail, failure to demonstrate need. These are exactly the same reasons. Numerous Livonia residents have been giving you at recent planning commission and city council meetings, uh, the same reasons. However, our reasons in Livonia go way beyond the Madison Heights reasons. We have nearby green mead. Future land use on this corner designates it for parks and recre- recreation. Our risk to the environments, our, to the environment is even greater. This corner is less than a hundred feet away from the golf course ponds and streams that ultimately feed the Rouge River. And the request is simply too extreme: going from C-one local business to basically highway commercial. Other residents tonight will talk about a lot of these issues. I want to focus on demand and need, and I'll tell you why. The Sheets representatives said two things in the prior meetings in the minutes on the record. First, and I quote, "This is going to serve a great demand in the community. Right in this general area, there's not much comparable to offer. So, that's why we believe this is going to be a great spot."
Yeah, that's time, Mr. President.
That's time, sir.
Um, you've mentioned that you would give us more time. Um, I beg of you, because...
So, I will say, if I, if I may, um...
I've got, I've got two more minutes, or a minute, a minute.
It's right now the rules. I, when Mr. Lindley was speaking, he presented a package, um, of the five minutes. I mean, if council is amicable...
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to grant one minute.
Support.
All right.
Thank you.
There you go.
Part of, uh, second, the second from, uh, the...
Mr. President, point of, we need to take a vote on that.
Yes, sorry. So, we have to take a vote on the extension of the minutes. It's just our, it's a Roberts rules, I apologize.
Robert.
So, we have a motion on the floor, we have support. Anything further from council? Anything from the audience on the extension? Madam Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilmember Buzinski?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Toye?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Vice President Tashnik?
Aye.
Pres, oh, excuse me, President McCullough?
Aye. And the motion carries. You have the floor again.
Okay. The Sheets representatives said two things. I said the one. The second one is, part of the denial for our previous role, location in Livonia was that the area was already well-served, five and Newburgh. This intersection in question is not well res, not well-served, and that's what kind of led us here. So, Sheets is basically trying to convince the people of Livonia and you that they're doing us a huge favor by filling demand and need. They said it, this is the sole basis for their rezoning request. Let me repeat, the sole basis. So, what's our response? We have eighteen gas stations within a mile or two and a half mile radius of that corner. So, there's no demand. When it comes to need, what's our response? Unlike Sheets, I spoke, I live in, uh, Gulf Ridge Villa, W, uh, Willow Woods and Deer Creek, four hundred homes. We petitioned our neighborhood, and they said ninety-five percent of our residents said, no, we don't want that. We don't want it rezoned, and we don't want that on that corner.
That's time, Mr. President.
That's time, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I just want to say, before, uh, Mr. Lindley, I, I, uh, give you the podium, um, we do have, this is, this item is planned to be on the January fifteenth, which will be a voting, our first voting meeting of the year, just to, just to give information, which I'm assuming you guys do know, I just want to clarify. Um, so there is, today in the study meeting, there's nothing to do with this item. I know you, obviously, you guys are free to, I just wanted to educate and let everybody know that the fifteenth is the day that this will be on the regular agenda, unless something changes.
If you, if you might, uh, what vote? Yes or no, that you're going to recommend yes or no?
No, it would be, no, it would be the sixteenth, regular meeting would be, and there could be motions made, there could be committee of whole, there could be denial, there could be approval, there could be committee of a whole. So, there can be motions and votes taken on the fifteenth.
Okay, because, because that's what I want, and, and would you please respond to my email?
Absolutely.
I want to have a committee of the whole.
You got it.
We need to have a conversation.
Yep, that's it.
This is too important.
If, if I may, Mr. President, just to back you up, um, because, again, it's not easy being the chair. To the residents, you know, we're not voting on that, this matter this evening. We had a special meeting just for the appointment to fill a vacancy. However, to the president's point, residents are allotted three minutes to, to talk about anything that's not on the agenda tonight. Um, and then at the next meeting, we can take an action, we can take a committee of the whole action, we can approve it, we can deny it. Uh, there's a whole host of, of options that the city council can have that night. Um, so you are allotted to talk about it tonight, but, you know, we're not making any decisions on that tonight, and we do have to follow the rules. That's why the, the president is enforcing them, because we have to make sure everyone has a fair opportunity to speak for a lot of time, but we can't go on all night long, sort of speak, because there is official business that needs to be happened. So, I just want to back up the president on all that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Donavick. So, I, I'm going to say, and I'm going to ask council if we could, uh, Mr. Lindley, uh, has presented himself as, uh, means-of-an-association speaker. He has a five-minute presentation. Um, I'm going to ask the colleagues if we could have a motion and approval potentially to extend and give him a total of five minutes. Um, there's not, you know, council's free to do what they want to do, but I'm going to recommend that we stick to this in the five minutes. Yes.
Okay. Who's got it?
Um, is every, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Anything from the audience to give Mr. Lindley five minutes? Mr. Lindley, the floor is yours, and you have five minutes. You tell us when you're ready to rock.
Uh, ready to go. Uh, honorable council members, uh, first of all, it's an honor to be here. Uh, my name's Willard Linda, I live at two oh two one eight Edgewood Avenue in Livonia, and we've been there for twenty-three years. We moved here because Livonia is a planned community. It's a zone community. It's a community that has foresight to do wonderful things, some of which includes the Vision Twenty-One. Uh, in history, I'm a professional community planner. I'm now retired. When Michigan required a license, I had to pass an exam like a bar exam to become a community planner. I'm also an attorney. I've graduated from both Thomas Cooley and Wayne State, uh, was primarily involved in licensing extremely large industrial and commercial projects, right up to nuclear power plants. Uh, when I retired, I was corporate counsel of the company that owns the Ambassador Bridge. My purpose to speak at this meeting is simply to educate you and to request your consideration for a meeting of the whole on the Sheets rezoning. My reasons are, the Livonia Planning Commission held two votes on the rezoning request. The first was three, three to three and a rejection for that reason. For some reason, without authority, and I still can't find justification for the Planning Commission to take a second vote, they took a second vote with fewer commi, commission members, and the decision on that was three to in favor of the rezoning application. Does the Planning Commission have authority to vote a second time? I don't know. I haven't been able to find justification or authority. When a couple of members of the Planning Commission were polled after the second meeting as to how they voted, uh, only one in particular that I was able to get a specific answer out was Wafa De Naro, and she stated that the application was in conformity and compliance with the land use plan for the city of Livonia. That's patently incorrect, as the Vision Twenty-One plan, as adopted by the city of Livonia, calls for the entire southeast corner of this property to be zoned or developed in the future as recreation and community use. No commercial use of any kind is proposed in that plan. It's very clear on, especially on the map. To piggyback on Mr. Rocco's comments, the proposed developer only conducted a feasibility analysis to whether traffic volumes could support his business. He did not do a need, or what I would call a, a certificate of need necessity showing that there is, in fact, a need for a gas station. I guess if there's a need for a gas station, it would be at Costco for about a dozen more pumps, because there's always a lineup of about a hundred cars waiting for thirty cent cheaper gas.
That's for sure.
A gas station of this type belongs in a commu, in a quarter commercial for the Vision Twenty-One plan or highway commercial unzoning. It doesn't belong in the middle of a residential and recreation area. In the city center section that the city hall is, or that you have adopted, uses such as gas stations, auto repair, and drive-through facilities are not permitted. We're asking for that same consideration. We're purely residential and recreation. We don't want a 24-hour gasoline station and drive-through restaurant in the middle of our community. We don't want the lights 24 hours a day, we don't want the traffic 24 hours a day, and we certainly don't want the crime 24 hours a day. And on the issue of crime, I've attached an article from the Caldean News that quotes the General Counsel of Sheets stating that they do have a crime problem. There's a quote in that article, I plead with you to read it, because it's pretty serious stuff. In 2023, the city of Livonia adopted a 20-year master plan for the Green Mead Historical Park to take advantage of the unique historical attributes, and a 24-hour gas station and restaurant right on the corner of that simply isn't compatible.
Thirty seconds.
It's not consistent with the plan. A goal of theme three on that plan is to support land use planning efforts to encourage environmentally friendly development, facilitate efforts to promote air quality, greenhouse gas reduction, and energy and water conservation. From a professional standpoint, land use plans and zoning ordinances are developed to ensure orderly progression from low-density to high-density uses. Jumping from parks and community recreation-
That's time, Mr. President.
-or community residential-
Mr. Lindley, that's, that's five minutes.
That's five minutes. May I finish this paragraph?
Unfortunately, with our Robert's rules, you can't, but if you have your information or anything like that, or we're going to adjourn this meeting, and it jumps into a study meeting, and you have time to speak at that time as well.
Got about two minutes left. Let the next speaker do it.
Sounds good.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lindley, and I live with him.
I love it. Thank you.
I'm just going to finish this letter that he wrote.
I'm sorry about that. I've known him on Rotary for a while.
From a professional stamp planning standpoint, land use plans and zoning ordinances are developed to ensure an orderly progression from low-density uses to higher-density uses in plan steps. A jump from parks and community uses or resident uses to a use that would, that should be located in either a corridor commercial or regional commercial is far too severe. Such a use is incompatible to current uses and neighboring the site. This concept is also why industrial uses are not adjacent to parks or residential developments. The creek behind this property is a tributary of the Rouge River, which for more than two decades have been undergoing a metamorphosis by both the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency and the Michigan DNR to be cleaned up and to be made more usable by Michiganders. A fuel spill, no matter how remote, would be devastating to this work. Even a good business in the wrong location is simply bad for the city. Attached to this memorandum is a copy of an article published by the Caldean News, which my husband mentioned, which I found today for him. Let's see. I guess that's it, but I just want to let you know that I feel the same way that everybody else here does. We voted for you people. You are our voice, and we are the voice of Livonia, and we want you to remember that you are our voice. And this is how we feel about this Sheets gas station coming to that section.
Thank you. All right. Name and address, and we are back to the three minutes and less.
Three minutes, okay. Well, I talk fast.
There we go.
I'll whip through this. My name is Nancy Philpott. I am the HOA president for Gulf Ridge Villa Homes. Following up to the Lindley's comments with respect to the Planning Commission, we feel that it's reasonable to conclude that the Planning Commission is still deadlocked at three votes, four and three votes against. This is a crucial point, because as a matter of precedent, the city council does not typically approve any request of this nature without first getting the approval of the Planning Commission. A deadlock is clearly not an approval. On this very critical point, the Planning Commission chairman, Mr. Wilshaw, was able to lend some clarity as to where Commission actually stood. As the record shows, at one point near the end of the October 22nd, '24 meeting, Mr. Wilshaw spoke. In order to do so, he momentarily passed the gavel. Taking from the official minutes, here's what he had to say. "I'd like to speak on this item. This is something I don't do very often in sharing meetings, but as chairman, I am not allowed to speak prior to votes, because I don't want to influence any of my fellow commissioners in making their decisions. So I have passed the gavel, so I am no longer responsible for this item, but a lot of comments have been made that residents give my personal view on to why I'm voting the way I am. It's no secret that I voted against this item at our prior meeting, and I intend to vote against it at this meeting. The reason for that is this is a rezoning of property from C1 to C2. As many folks in the audience stated, we are raising the intensity use of this property by doing that rezoning at C1. It's a local, what's called local zoning. It allows for light commercial uses. I would say it's probably the best way to describe it, similar to the ones that we've seen there previously. There is a light commercial use north of this property, which is the daycare center in Farmington Hills. The remainder of this intersection, when you look at it, is residential and public land. It's parks, a golf course, and residential properties, including right at the corner, which is highly unusual at most corners throughout our city to have residential right at the corner. When I look at this area, it's a very unique area in the sense of having so much open space. There are hundreds of acres of open land in the vicinity, and I'm also old enough to remember when many areas of the city were like this. But this really exists nowhere else in Livonia at this point. And if I stand at this intersection, I can go one mile in almost any direction to get access to a gas station. I get access to a convenience store, I can get access to fast food restaurants, and many of those operate with extended hours. Not necessarily 24 hours. But to sum it up, of course, we don't want it, and neither does he. He's going to vote no. While questions remain on whether the Planning Commission followed appropriate procedures and how to help, it held two votes on this rezoning request, there's no doubt that the Commission is not crystal clear on its recommendation. In fact, it can only reasonably be ascertained that the Commission has not given approval. And I would ask all of you to drive past that corner, and you can't tell me-
That's time, Mr. President.
That's time. But thank you very much. Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for having us today.
Yep. Name and address for the record.
My name is David Hall. I'm here with my wife, Karen. We live at 37300 West Eight Mile, directly across the street from this proposed site. I'm going to bring it on a personal level. Let me tell you about my family first. My wife and her first husband bought this place 35 years ago, two and a half acres. It was a beautiful piece of property. They've raised, we've raised, I've been in this place 18 years now. We've raised four kids on this piece of property. They're all adults now. We came home one day from a vacation to find that the city of Farmington Hills decided they were going to put a daycare next to our house. They bulldozed that whole property down, it was all woods. For 20 years now, since this place has been built, my wife cannot go in our bedroom, because my bedroom's up front. And I've got some pictures I want to give you guys, so you'll know in the next meeting. She has not been able to take a nap in our, in her own bedroom, and sleep in her own bed, because of the noise that we have from this daycare. We have the weekends, and that's why, yeah, there's not much we can do. We do have our weekends. It's nice and quiet. Let's see. I want to hit, now, the proposed site for this gas station, I say truck stop, or mini truck stop is the way they say. They're going to have a drive-through, and the proposed site is on the south side of the building. Well, when they come, when they get their food, they're going to come out coming north. Now, every headlight is going to be beaming in my bedroom window. We have a big four-foot by 12-foot window. It's going to be beaming in there. I have a pictures, we took pictures also, of the headlights beaming into our house. And so this is one thing we've got to deal with. The pump, the pumps that they propose, where they're going to put them, 60 feet away from my driveway. 60 feet. I mean, this place is going to be lit up like a Christmas tree. It's ridiculous. This, we do not need this in this area. This is a residential area. We have green mead across the street. We also have-
Thirty seconds.
-the accidents. The accidents on this corner are unbelievable. They're hard-hitting. I got pictures of the accidents. Just in the last three weeks, we've probably got five accidents have been on that corner. It's unbelievable. The traffic, I don't know how they're going to sustain the traffic here. I mean, in closing, Sheets has always said it's been all about family. I don't believe that at all. I don't think they care a rat's ass about my family.
That's time, Mr. President.
That's time. Thank you. And then if you could, after this meeting, we'll grab that stuff, and we'll get it to council. Thank you. Good evening.
Patty Rigio, 37204 Breton Drive, President of the Willow Woods HOA. What is the purpose for raising the intensity of the property of Eight Mile and Newburgh? Neither the Planning Commission nor the city council have presented a solid reason on why this property needs to be rezoned in intensity from C2 to C1 to C2. The land surrounding it is parks of recreation and residential. It's Livonia's largest open space. Why would you choose to degrade this beautiful area, with the zoning of this beautiful area, just to accommodate a 24-hour gas station? Let's talk about traffic. Have you tried to get out of our subdivision during rush hour traffic? Willow Woods subdivision enters directly onto Newburgh Road. St. Martins on the east and west side of Newburgh are disjointed and create major chaos in the turning lane. Sometimes cars have to leapfrog over each other to gain access to the respective streets. Have you observed the illegal left-hand turns out of Speedway onto Newburgh? People make this illegal turn constantly throughout the day, cutting across three lanes of traffic. The intersection of Eight Mile and Newburgh is even more dangerous. It's hindered by blind spots and heavy traffic. Have you considered how the heavy traffic will affect school bus stops? My neighbor expressed how 70 to 80% of the vehicles on Newburgh totally disregard the flashing red lights of the school buses. Will this development increase property taxes? Sheets would increase the property tax, but only to that property. However, our three HOAs represent 400 homes, and together pay close to $4 million annually in property taxes. Let that soak in, $4 million annually. Our home values have gone up every year largely because the city has maintained the integrity of the surrounding area. Our residents are concerned that this zoning, this rezoning would contradict the beauty of the surrounding green space and negatively impact our future home value. Are you concerned that this site would become blight if you turned down the Sheets development? One city representative is concerned that blight would occur in this corner if you don't go with Sheets. But our city inspectors ensure property is properly maintained regardless of whether it's occupied or emptied. Look at the Kmart and the Sears stores, they've been closed for over a decade. There's no blight there. An empty Rite Aid is not blight. There is no rush here. We can afford the time to be patient for a different business under the current zoning. Please slow down and refer this to the Committee of the Whole for a detailed review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kate Shaskovsky, 16941 Shrewsbury. Livonia needs another gas station? I mean, how many, how many corners are there in this city where you've got at least one, usually two, at least two, gas stations? I don't, I don't think it's necessary. I think for the reasons that other people have stated about the environmental concerns and the potential blight, blight concerns, it should not be built.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. You've heard from-
Can we stand your name and address for the record?
I was going to come around to it, but now that you've put me on the spot, I'll do it.
We'll reset the clock.
No need, I won't be that long. Dunne Berenson, 20012 Wayne Road. I am the president of the Deer Creek Homeowners Association. I wanted you to know that, because you've heard from the Willow Woods president, you've heard from Gulf Ridge, you've heard from members of Gulf Ridge and Deer Creek already. I want you to know that we're all behind the request for a committee of the whole, where we can present this in even more detail than you've heard here. I have a question. Can you, as a group, instead of waiting for the, is it the 15th or the 16th, that meeting of January?
Fifteenth.
Can you take it off of that agenda, even tonight, or in your business? I see-
No, you've got to give notice.
Councilman Toy saying no.
You've got to give notice, sir, to be fair to the whole community.
Okay. What we're hoping for is that you will create a committee of the whole before taking any other action on this particular issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? With that, oh.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Cindy Fleming. I live in Livonia, and I'm here representing the Save Alfred Noble Library, or former library building. I would like to bring on this evening where you replaced former councilman Jim Jolly, who previously stated, when you had a, an agenda item in regard to Noble, that it appeared that there was a breach of trust between the city and the population. I come tonight to say that that breach of trust is continuing. I know you had a committee of the whole meeting, I appreciate that all of you were in attendance, so I'm kind of speaking to you, but speaking to the public. I need you to know that there are city officials who have been observed talking about the housing that is going to replace the Noble building. Out in public, overheard, and when the citizen asked them about their comments, they joked back and said, "Don't worry, it won't be a car wash or a chicken joint." This is not good. You had put aside $20,000 to hopefully secure the building from further damage, and to also get an effective engineering study that would show what needed to be done to rehab the building. It appears that people who work for the city, I'm hoping it's none of you, are continuing to possibly make underhanded deals for a developer to build housing in that spot. It's not okay. We're going to fight it. And I want you to know about it, because I know that there are many of you who do feel that this is an ongoing thing, and that the Alfred Noble Library should be saved for the benefit of our community. It should not give financial gain to any one person or group of people or developer.
Thirty seconds.
It's a city property, and it should be maintained by the city for the benefit of our community and culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. Kathleen McIntyre, 14455 Fairway. Just a point of clarification. Someone asked about removing an item from the agenda, and I believe the person was answered that that can't be done. I believe that items can be removed by the agenda, by the decision of the council president. So I just, and if I'm not correct, somebody please correct me, but that was always my understanding during my time on council. So thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi again. Just love it up here. Deb Christensen from Livonia.
Wait. Only spoke once, you can't, you can't speak. Was it, were you, if she spoke on- During a regular. Oh, you did, you spoke, so- Speaking of study, man.
She could speak in the study.
Yes. You got to wait for the study, because you already spoke on it. If that's, yes. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Donovan. Anything further? With that being said, I am going to ask council for a motion to adjourn.
Support.
And I think I can safely show six. Livonia, we are going to take a 10-minute recess. Why don't we say, actually, we will start the study meeting at 8:20. Thank you.
Ready.
[inaudible].[1782.33]